All right, Mr. Withers, how are you today?
Good, good. How are you, Tim?
Excellent, excellent. We can hear you pretty well on the volume. Everybody can hear Bud, okay? Good. All right, we have a couple of latecomers, so we'll hang on here for a little bit longer.
Sure. Sounds good. How's the weather down on the coast?
Lovely, lovely. I think it's probably close to 60 or between 55 and 60.
Cool.
Where do you live, Tim, that it's close to 60?
Well, my house, I mean, yeah.
It probably is because it's in the low 50s here.
Okay.
It'll be warmer where you are.
Yeah.
Well, I've got 46 degrees where I am. I live outside Seattle.
Is, yeah. Whereabouts? East side or?
Yeah, yeah, we live in Woodinville. Are you familiar with that?
Uh huh.
Yeah, about 20 miles northeast of Seattle.
Okay, okay.
It used to be the far distant, you wouldn't even call it a suburb. We've been here 30 years. It was, you know, it was almost rural then.
Sure.
Now, now it's, it's just kind of in the middle of the suburbs, basically.
Yeah. I have a daughter, my younger daughter lives, oh, I forget the name of the neighborhood. But in, in Seattle, I guess, South Seattle, around Boeing Field.
Oh, okay.
But she teaches in Bellevue.
Okay. So it's probably Georgetown neighborhood?
It is Georgetown. Thank you. Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she's on the uphill side of Georgetown.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kind of a cool neighborhood.
Yeah, kind of, kind of Bohemian, kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you get used to the aircraft pretty quickly when we're visiting, shaking the house.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think the eerie part of 9/11 was the days after, especially if I was out on a bicycle ride that took me closer to Logan Airport, was the silence. The fact that there was no noise.
Yeah.
It was really startling and, you know, really tough to deal with, actually.
Yeah.
No, nothing in the sky.
Yeah. Carl, have you heard, or have any of you heard about the, it's been a few years now, the musical Come From Away? It was, it's been on Broadway for about four, four or five years now. Basically, it's the story of, of the diverted airlines that landed in Gander's, Nova Scotia, which in itself, you know, was a town of 5,000 or 6,000, and in one day, 10,000 new people landed in Gander's during, and so it's a musical about the whole story of how the town pulled together and fed the people. And, and it's a great, great story.
Haven't seen it.
Never heard of it.
Yeah. So.
All right. Well, why? It was, you know, I had, I left my office after the planes hit. We had a TV on. And for some reason, I made the choice of going across a bridge rather than through a tunnel to get home.
Yeah.
And halfway across that bridge, I started to think, gee, was this the smart thing to do? But.
Yeah.
They were just leaving Boston, not coming to it.
There you go. Well, let's go ahead and get started, and we'll enter a few other members as they, as they report. So welcome everyone to our December 9 regular meeting of the Gold Beach Rotary Club. And we'll go ahead and start with the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we're gonna bring Jerry in here. Our thought for the day comes from one of my favorite presidents because he and I share the same birthday, Harriet S. Truman. And he has quote for the day is, "If you can't convince them, confuse them." So with that thought, the floor is open to share any, I've put the agenda up on the screen there. You can see we'll have some happy thoughts, some announcements from yesterday's meeting, and then we'll introduce Bud. Bud, do you have flexible time, or do you need to move to the top of the agenda?
No, I've got as much time as you need.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So this is time for happy thoughts or announcements.
Well, just to update the club on what's happening at the Homeless Coalition. They have a bus from Curry Transit that's being outfitted to be a portable office. Sometime next week, the building on Covin Street will be closed. The washer and dryer that Rotary paid for with help from Doogie is under a memorandum of agreement with Christian Help and will remain available for Beth and the people helping the homeless to use to clean clothing and sleeping bags and the like. They are in conversation with the senior center about providing noontime meals. They had, they provided maybe 10-bag lunches to people in addition to, you know, when I'm there doing shower duty at 10 o'clock in the morning, people drop in and get a bagel and a cup of hot coffee. The open discussion item is what will happen with showers. Will we be able to provide showers somewhere within Gold Beach? The good news is one of our very young female clients showed up yesterday. Happy as can be. She was 34 days sober.
Awesome.
Which is good to see.
Hey Carl, if, in fact, Beth is able to get some sort of permanent location, will she be able to take the washer and dryer?
If, if that were to happen, she could. Yes, the memorandum of agreement clearly acknowledges, Christian Help clearly acknowledges it's owned by the Homeless Coalition from Rotary. Because of its location in the building, there was a little bit of discussion about access to it for a while, but that has been resolved and it is working out very well.
Okay, good.
You know, people are, you know, until we closed, and the county is taking the building back and Beth hopes, you know, is planning on closing the doors there in advance of December 31st. But the bus is ready, still looking at a building in town. Don't have the money for it, don't know if the zoning would work. But, you know, the program continues. The regulars are still around. Some of them, you know, one of the guys I see periodically used to live up at the mill site up towards Agnes. Well, he's been evicted, if you will. They're clearing the brush that he lived in because a new owner is turning that into an RV park. Apparently.
That's what I hear.
But, you know, you know, you see most of the regulars that aren't in jail, they're, they're still floating around. Some are doing very well and some aren't doing very well at all.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you, Carl. I appreciate that, that update. Jeremy, yesterday during our board meeting alluded to an announcement you might make today, but since the people who are at the board meeting are also present today, for the record, did you want to remind people about the, I think it was the book study?
Well, there's, there's two programs that may be of interest to people. The first one is, well, they're both virtual programs. One is tomorrow at 5:30, which is the Museum of Bad Art. Out of Boston, they're doing a virtual program talking about bad art.
I have my tickets.
So if you're interested, you can go to the library website and, and request a Zoom invitation for that. And then the other one that I was particularly surprised by how much I was impressed by it was one that Brody Carpenter put together, which is a, a book club. And so he picked a book that he wanted to make available to the public for reading, and we have multiple copies of it available, but it's called Designology. And it is a book about, that really focuses on the different ways that people perceive space around them based on their personalities and, and other characteristics and how you can design spaces within your home to be compatible with those characteristics. And I, it's a pretty quick read. I read, I read through it and, you know, I've gone through the Myers-Briggs workshops and other things like that. And, you know, they're, they're interesting, but this one, I was surprised at even the minutia about how accurate it was in terms of my own personal preferences for spaces and my wife. So, for example, since COVID, she's been doing a lot of work at home. She's a teacher. And so she's, all spring, she was on her computer, on her laptop, doing online school stuff. And she was developing pretty serious neck problems because of being hunched over on the computer. And in this book, it says for people of her personality type, you need to be really careful to make sure that you've got an extremely comfortable work chair and desk space, maybe a stand-up desk, because basically you're the type of person that doesn't realize how long you're sitting at your computer. And, and you're also highly distracted by, by, by pain. So I'm pretty surprised how good that was. And I was just thinking that for anybody who, I mean, for a variety of reasons, I think it's a really compelling program. So if you're interested, there's going to be an introductory session kind of to talk about the book that Brody will be leading, but there's, there's plenty of time to read the book, check out the book at the library or buy your own copy and then participate in an online discussion.
Great. Is that a one-time session, or is it meant to you read along and say?
It's gonna just be a one-time thing.
Okay.
So the introduction will be a one-time thing, and then, I'm not sure, I'll have to pull up the schedule, but I believe it's not going to be until January that he'll do the one-time book discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just a quick summary of our board meeting yesterday. We decided that because of our restrictions, we would go ahead and have our bottle auction be a virtual event. And with the idea that people generally have an amount that they donate or plan to donate every, excuse me, donate every year. So we'd asked that you continue in that process for this season by dropping off your, your, your check or cash, or if you want to use a card, Becky can help do that at the bank. And appreciate your consideration for that. Secondly, we, the board decided that we would apply for the District 5110's literacy grant with the goal that we would purchase, provide gift certificates for Riley Creek Elementary students so that they could go to a virtual book fair and purchase books that they would have in their home. And Jeremy's gonna kind of help with some of those arrangements with Riley Creek. And then finally, we have, I believe, four non-active members who, they're, excuse me, they're, our final report to Rotary International is due at the end of the month, and we want to make sure it's accurate so we're not billed for them. So we've, Denise has given final notice to those people. If they don't reply by December 28th, then they will be dropped from our roles.
You know what I just thought of after talking to Becky yesterday? Is we need to let her know so that she can start keeping her whichever credit card thing she uses at the bank, because she doesn't always have it with her. I'd asked her specifically if people could pay their dues by credit card. It's not worth it to do it for a one-time thing.
Right, right.
Because of the cost, but also it's usually at home. So, you know, one of us just has to remind her to bring it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna, yesterday I had a photo op with, with Mary to, to receive the donation for the Highon Health program. And so when I drop that off, I'll get a chance to talk with Becky about that as well. Excuse me, I've had a knock on my door. I just need to remind people I'm in a meeting. Oh, there you are. Speaking of which.
There's one.
There's one. I'm in a Rotary meeting.
I know.
Oh, yeah. We're good.
Password, F, N. Password is, password, 2023.
Perfect. Thank you. No?
I wouldn't give you, it's just more.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll try to get to the meeting here.
All right, it's, it's recorded.
Okay.
See ya. Thanks. You didn't recognize that was Brian.
Was dropping off laptops?
He was, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Is Mary, Mary still on?
She is.
Because one of the things I'm thinking is that we need to get that out and whether we, and I think we said it was gonna go, you were gonna write it and send it to Mary to put on Facebook? On the?
Bottle auction.
Laptops?
Oh, the laptops. I thought we were talking about the bottle auction.
All that too, but how do we get out the notice for the laptops?
Yeah, same thing. We could do that.
It looks like Tim poked his head back out the door. I, I think that there was some, Tim, Denise was asking about the laptops and the criteria, how we could advertise that to the membership or the community at large.
Right.
And I can't remember, who was, was Brian, or were you, were you gonna talk to Dan?
I was gonna talk, yeah, I was gonna talk to Dan, our district IT person, about what the boundaries, if you will, as far as age and operating systems and such, to make it a worthy donation, a usable donation, I should say. So, yeah, I will do that. Last call for any announcements or other club business, otherwise we'll move on to our, to our guest speaker. And I'm gonna stop sharing screen here in a second. You'll notice that in the agenda that, that I'll send out after the meeting, there's some hot links or just links that could be cold too, I suppose, that Bud will refer to in his chat. So Bud reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and offered to speak with us today. His very brief bio is, he's been a longtime sports writer in the Northwest, including 17 years with the Register Guard. He is the author of Mad Hoops, a book chronicling the chaotic and controversial reign of the Kamikaze Kids. Yesterday, I called them the Century Kids. The Kamikaze Kids and Coach Dick Harder at the U of O. My memories of the 70s, Bud, if you see, our membership has a wide range of ages. But as a high school student in the, in the mid 70s, I grew up in Stockton. So my big follow, of course, was the University of the Pacific and some of their glory days about that same time. But I also have a vivid memory of going to a high school game in which this young seven-foot guy named Bill Cartwright at Elk Grove High School came, came down to Stockton and they packed to the Civic Auditorium and, and the local team actually beat Bill Cartwright. But anyway, I, as a high school kid, I was definitely a basketball gym rat and would gobble up. So at least personally, I am really looking forward to hearing about your experiences as a reporter and the whole process of self-publishing your book. So with that, I'll go ahead and formally introduce Bud Withers.
Thanks, Tim. We, we really set this up kind of on the fly pretty quickly, and I appreciate your being nimble about it. I guess that's sort of the watchword during the pandemic. But it occurred to me also that for as miserable as the pandemic has, has made all of us in varying degrees, that at least there's a speck of, of good that comes out of it with, with meetings like this, because it would be difficult for me to get down to Gold Beach, you know, to, to appear in person. So this is certainly a, a fine consolation prize, being able to do it via Zoom. So there is that at least. So to give you just a smidge more background on myself before we launch into this, I, I did work in Eugene for 17 years. And I was, during the, the time period of the Kamikaze Kids at Oregon in the 70s, I was actually the beat writer on Oregon State basketball, which, which was, was interesting. Some of you may remember Ralph Miller, who was the legendary, actually future Hall of Fame basketball coach at Oregon State. And I covered him for a number of years. And, but being in Eugene, obviously, obviously I had a, what I would call a front row seat to all the proceedings at, at the U of O under, under Dick Harder. So after, and anyway, in brief, after my years in Eugene, I came up to Seattle in the late 80s and worked at both Seattle papers for a good bit of time, actually about 28 years. And then I retired in 2015 from the Seattle Times, but I, I still wanted to write. And so I sort of veered off into self-publishing books. And it's been a really fulfilling pursuit, I guess you would say. This, this is my second self-published book, and this is, this is what the, what the Oregon book looks like. Mad Hoops is what I called it. It, I don't know, are any of you familiar with, with that era at Oregon? Or, or I need to kind of get a foundation as to what you might know and what you, what you may not know. Any, anybody? Anybody was around then? Okay.
Well, I know Denise, Carl, and Mary are all East Coasters, so. And Jeremy wasn't born yet. And Jerry, I know, has got pretty strong allegiance to the Beavers, so. Bud, yeah, please go ahead and fill us in.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I'm fully prepared to give you a sort of a baseline of what, what it was all about. Probably the best way to think of, of the, this particular reign, which was seven years, 1971 to 78, is that most of you probably have heard of Bob Knight at the University of Indiana and, and just kind of what a wacko he was. I tend to think of Dick Harder, Dick Harder's time at Oregon as sort of very similar to Bob Knight, but without the trophies. Harder certainly never won a national championship as Knight did. He, he never won a Pac-8 championship. It was the Pac-8 back in those days. Of course, he had to go up against John Wooden at UCLA, so that was, that was, that was a pretty formidable challenge. And it would, it would probably be unrealistic to think that he could, he could knock Wooden off for, for a conference championship. But he was, in terms of his personality, he was, he was similar. He was, he was known for being a very mercurial figure. Did a lot of, you know, bizarre things on and off the court. He, to kind of take a step backward, he believed in a, as much as Bob Knight did, he believed in a, in a very rugged defense. His system was very defense-oriented. His, he wanted his players to dive on the floor for loose balls. He, it was man-to-man defense almost exclusively. I doubt that they ever played a possession of zone during his seven years. But it was very grabby and, and physical and, and tons of fouls in the game. I was, even, even knowing the era pretty, pretty intimately, I was, in going back and doing the research for the book, I was blown away by some of the foul totals. There was, I cite an example in the book. One of his years, they committed, and I can't tell you what year it was offhand, they committed 800-plus fouls in the, the, what was it, the, the year, I believe it was, the statistic I quoted, the year previous to him getting there, they had, they had committed like 450. It was, it was just this crazy rise. And that number of fouls, by the way, still holds as the Oregon, I mean, here we are 45 years later, still holds as the Oregon school record. But it was, it was extremely rugged, and they were known for doing things like in, in practice, they would, they would station a player on each side of the key and roll the ball through the key, and the players would have to compete for the ball. They would have to dive on the ball. And of course, you'd have collisions and blood and bruises. And they would, they, they had a drill in which, in which a player would, would have to, there would be a line of players facing a single player. And the single player would have to take a charge from, from, you know, the front of the line, get back up, take a charge from the next guy, and just repeat it, you know, just physical punishment. You know, it was just extreme. And then in the later years of Harder's regime, about, about halfway, which would be 1975 or '76, he came upon the idea of, when they did defensive slides, which, which you may be familiar with, it's just, it's just the action of a defensive player sliding laterally to, to mirror the offensive player, you know, with, with your hands outstretched. He came upon the idea of, gee, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be, you know, great training to, to require the players to hold a brick, you know, a masonry brick in each hand? And so they would go for minutes on end, you know, going back and forth, like a half an hour, going back and forth and doing these slides with, with these bricks in their hands. And they would, they would, they would require them to, you know, to, maybe they'd, maybe they'd raise the right hand with this brick and, and lower the left one and vice versa. And they were, they were just all manner of these things. And, and then another thing he did late in his, in his tenure, at about the same time as the bricks, was the ropes. He, he, I don't know where he, well, I kind of do know where he got this. But anyway, he, he had a couple of ropes affixed to the, to the catwalk up in MacArthur Court, the old arena in Eugene. And toward the end of practice, players would have to, you know, would have to shinny up this rope. It might be, I don't know, what would, maybe 30 feet high. But it was, you know, it was a real test of stamina. And there was one player in particular who, aside from the physical demands of this, he was, he was afraid of heights and, you know, he was terrified of, of, of having to, to do this. And he finally overcame that, but, but it was. to do this. And he, he finally overcame that. But, but it was, uh, you know, for him in particular, it was, it was just this, uh, really, really challenging idea to, to shinny up this rope. Uh, so anyway, the, the baseline is that, that Harder was, was just this incredibly demanding figure. Um, a little bit about the, uh, the predominant player of that era. Uh, I'd be curious to know if, if any of you, uh, do you remember Ronnie Lee? Uh, he was, he was the, I mean, without question, the leading light as a player. He was, he was from, they had recruited him from Boston. Um, and he was, uh, I, I'm still not sure to this day how Oregon managed to, to get him out of Boston and, and come 3,000 miles west. They, they obviously put in a lot of hard work. But, uh, he was a, you know, just really well-built, a 6'4", one, maybe 195 or 200 pounds. He was the kind of guy you'd look at him and say, gee, he'd be a great, strong safety in football, something like that, or, or other positions in football as well, I suppose. But, um, just, uh, an unbelievably magnetic figure in Eugene, you know, deeply loved. Um, he, uh, he was not a great shooter, but he, uh, he, he was the kind of guy, nowadays they say he's, he's not a great shooter, but he's a scorer. And Lee was that way. He averaged 18 points a game every year he was at Oregon. He was remarkably consistent. Uh, but a lot of his points came from, you know, driving to the basket and, and, uh, uh, just, you know, pulling the ball back and then, and then sort of almost willing the ball into the basket. Um, he had a great game, uh, in particular when he was a freshman at Oregon, uh, the, the first time Oregon hosted UCLA when, during his, during his four years. Uh, he had 31 points and, and in researching the, the register guard story, you know, it referred to him taking the ball at Bill Walton, um, the, the UCLA All-American, you know, three-time All-American. And, uh, so, you know, you had this, this towering physical presence inside with Walton and Lee was not intimidated at all, took the ball to the basket against him and had this, might've been the most remarkable game he had in his four years, frankly. Um, and then he was, he was just the kind of player that, you know, kids loved and, and he seemed to love kids too, you know, little kids, you know, that would, would, uh, collect around him and, and he'd, you know, he'd, he'd play games with them and, and, you know, just, just was this really incredibly magnetic figure in Eugene. And without question, he's, you know, if you think of, I, I tried to toy with this a little bit in the book and, and not very, not very well, I don't think. But if you somehow were to, were to come up with a, with a, a number of the, the best athletes that the University of Oregon has ever produced, um, you know, including people like Marcus Mariota, the Heisman Trophy winner, uh, you know, Lee would, would have to be, uh, among that, that group of four or five. He was, he was just a, just a huge figure, especially locally and in the state. I, again, we're talking about an era that's now 45, 50 years old or almost 50. Um, and, and, and obviously no social media at that time. Uh, but, but he was, uh, he, he was just a, a huge, huge, uh, figure in, in that era. Uh, and also I should mention, he's, he's still the, uh, the Oregon career-leading scorer, 2, 2,085 points. And it's interesting to me that he, uh, if you, if you take all the Pac-12 schools currently, uh, his record that, you know, he, he would have set that record in, in his senior year of, of 1976. And, and if you took all the other 11 schools in the Pac-12, uh, none of their career scorer, none of their career-leading scorers, uh, go back even within a decade of his. And, and the, part of the reason I bring that up is there, there was no three-point shot back, back in the day that Lee competed. Um, and so most of these other, most of, most of the other 11 schools, uh, well, in, in fact, all of the other 11, uh, would have come in the era of the three-point shot, which, which of course makes a huge difference in, in that calculation. So, um, as much as there was this love for Ronnie Lee, there was, there was this incredible mania in Eugene over the Kamikaze Kids. They, uh, it was a period of time when, when football really struggled. And, and I know that so well because in addition to covering Oregon State basketball, I was, I was the, the beat writer on, on U of O football. Yeah, and they were really lean years in football with, with usually two or three wins. Uh, uh, but, but basketball sort of became this, uh, this incredible, uh, event in Eugene. And about Harder's second year, they began to sell out, uh, MacArthur Court and, and they sold out, I believe, I, I want to say through the end of his tenure, which would have been in 1978. Um, but if not, then, then, you know, most of those years, they, they were, they were selling out. And it was, it was a really tough ticket, so to speak. Um, and it became a, uh, it became one of those things where you would see, uh, divorce settlements, you know, the, uh, the, the, the guy or the, the lady would get the, uh, you know, the, the rights to the season tickets or, or in, uh, um, wills, uh, people, you know, people would, you know, if somebody dies and they would leave their tickets to, uh, to, to somebody in the family, you know, that it became a big deal to, to get your hands on Oregon's season tickets. And I suppose season tickets then probably were, probably a ridiculously low amount by today's standards. I mean, probably $70 or $80 for a season ticket. Um, but, uh, they, they were, you know, it was just, there was just, just this incredible thirst for in, information about the program within Eugene. And, uh, they, uh, uh, the, before, you know, nowadays, you, you may have heard about how, how students will, will camp out at like Duke University to, uh, you know, for days before a big game. Well, there, there were actually students who, who camped out outside the, the, uh, the doors of MacArthur Court on University Street. Um, a handful of students, you know, would, would camp out a, a day or two before big games there. And it was, it was just, uh, a huge happening in Eugene. Uh, one of the things I, I get into in the book, uh, is that, you know, Harder, Harder's personality was, was, uh, I think really intriguing. It would be interesting to know what a, what a psychologist would, would come up with, uh, in regards to him because he, uh, he had really high standards for his players. He, uh, you know, he, he wanted to recruit good kids, quote unquote, good kids. Um, they, you know, he required, he had a dress code on, when they went on road trips. I hesitate to say coat and ties, but, but I believe it was at least coats. I don't know about ties. Uh, but he definitely wanted, he had this high standard for, um, for his players. Uh, and yet, uh, in his personal life, you know, I get into it just because it was such a big part of his persona. He, he was quite a womanizer, uh, and it, it sort of tore apart his family. Um, and it was, it was an odd thing because Eugene was, you know, basically a medium-sized city. It was, it was a city of about 75,000 at the time. And, and now it's about twice that size, not that it would make any difference, but, um, a- and, and as well, there were, there were these other, uh, incidents that, that sort of, you, you just sort of were left scratching your head. Uh, you know, how did this guy possibly do some of this stuff? Um, as an example, and I got into this pretty heavily, um, there, there was an infamous incident in 1974 in, in Carvalis at Gil Coliseum, uh, where, uh, way back in the day, they, they used to have a trophy that, that exemplified or, or, uh, was emblematic of whichever school won the season series. Um, and Oregon State was, was about to wrap it up in 1974 with a, with a victory at Gil Coliseum against Oregon. Um, and so the, there was a cheerleader, a male cheerleader who, uh, was given the, you know, right before the game wrapped up, there were seconds left on the clock. Um, he, uh, he decided that, you know, the fans ought to be able to see this trophy. It was called the Chancellor's Cup. And, uh, you know, it was a basic trophy with a, with a ball on the top. And, and so, uh, I believe it was like four, I go into it in great detail in the book. It was like 14 seconds left in the game and it was a dead ball situation. And he starts out and runs around the perimeter of the floor waving the, the trophy to the fans who are naturally jacked up. They're, they just, they're about to beat Oregon. And, and he runs in front of the Oregon bench and Harder sticks out his leg and trips him. And, uh, it was just so Dick Harder to do that. And, and of course, the kid goes flying, I mean, totally shocked. And, and the trophy, uh, the, the trophy goes up and, and lands and, and the ball breaks off the, the trophy. So, and, and there's a big dent in the, in the ball of the, uh, trophy. And of course, it, you know, it got, it got sort of nasty inside Gil Coliseum right then. And Ralph Miller took the, uh, public address microphone and, and, you know, basically told, told people to try to, to cool it. And, uh, I mean, it was, it was, I, I was there that night and it was, uh, vaguely, you know, it, it seemed pretty ominous. I mean, like, you know, something could really, like, like a brawl or something could really break out. And when that happens, you know, you might have fans involved because, you know, people saw this. And so, um, just, uh, you know, it was, that's probably the most outrageous thing Harder did in terms of a single incident. But there were, there were a lot of other things that were, that were just sort of mind-bending that, uh, that I get into in the book. Uh, a couple of pla- players that I interviewed for the book, uh, and I interviewed quite a few, uh, we, we chatted about whether, whether an era like that would be possible today with, with social media and Twitter and Instagram and who knows what else, the things that I, that I'm unfamiliar with, you know, that, that I can't operate. But, and, and one or two of them said, you know, they didn't think it would be possible. I mean, it would, there was such a huge intensity and focus in Eugene on, on this program. And, and as I said, like a thirst for knowledge, um, that it was, uh, a, you know, it, it would be hard to envision. I think Harder would have been one of those coaches, and you hear about him today, I think it's fairly common actually, that, that would have banned his players from Twitter, at least during the season. Because, uh, there, there was just the, the, the intensity of the, uh, of the back and forth if, if, uh, i- if they, if they, if they were active on Twitter, it would, I mean, there would be, there would be so much, so many people in Eugene who, who would be, uh, just, you know, wanting to know everything that was going on. There was just, the, the program just ran at such a, a fever pitch. And, and, uh, so I, I, it, it would be really interesting to see how, uh, how, how that would have worked out. Um, I can, I can talk for a couple of minutes about self-publishing if you, if you, if you'd like. I don't know if you have time or, or interest, but, uh, um, I could just kind of give you the basics of, of my experiences with it. I, I've done five books now and, uh, the first three that I did were, uh, were with publishers or, or a publisher approached me and, and asked if I could, uh, do a book on a particular topic and, uh, you know, if I could get it done by a certain time, et cetera, et cetera. And, and, uh, and I, and I did that in those three cases. Um, the, when, when you work with a publisher, uh, essentially, you know, with, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say this is entirely true, but essentially you just write the book and they do the, the rest of the work. You know, they, they get the photos, they, they do the cover. Um, they, uh, primarily do the, the marketing and the promotion and so forth, although, uh, they might prevail upon you to, you know, to, to help market the thing, which, you know, is, is not a big, not a big deal because if, if you, if you want to sell books, you got to help market the thing. So, um, so the big difference, uh, in self-publishing is you're, as the name would imply, you're, 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 you're doing, you're taking on a lot of these tasks yourself or sort of subcontracting them out, I guess you'd say. Um, it's funny, when I, I think in years past, when, when I heard about self-publishing, I sort of had this image of, uh, sitting down with, and, and, uh, creating this huge Word file and, and writing the book and, and like printing it out on, on my HP printer and, and then slapping a title page on it. And, you know, here's the book. And, well, it, you know, I had this sort of real slapdash, uh, uh, image of it in my mind, but it, it's not like that at all. And, uh, hopefully if, you know, if you see, if you see this book, you know, hopefully you won't, you, you would not know that it's self-published as opposed to working with a publisher. Um, just in brief, and, and I, you know, I won't go into a lot of detail because, because we probably don't have that time. But, um, a, a guy that, that, uh, that had done this and, and was kind of a mentor to me, uh, told me, he said, you know, really you need two things. He said, you know, write a great book and, and get a great cover. And so, uh, to get a, to get the cover, what you've got to do is, is, uh, hook up with a graphic design person. Um, and, and you can, there, there's even, I, I explored it sort of briefly for this book, but you, you can, there's actually websites that, that, uh, that have examples of book covers that they design. And, and you know, I, I, again, I've never, I've never worked with them, but, um, apparently it's, it's a way to go. Um, the other, um, big difference as, in self-publishing as opposed to, uh, working with a publisher is there is, uh, much as I just referred to, the, the idea of, you know, printing this stuff out on your home printer or whatever, well, that, that's not what you do. You, you have to, for instance, this book is available on Amazon. Um, and you can't just say send Word files to Amazon and say, hey, here's the book, uh, you know, print it, you know, do, do, uh, print out copies for me or anything like that. What, what you have to do, there's sort of a middle, middleman, so to speak. It's, it's, it's what is a pre-print service. And what that does is, okay, so I write the book, uh, you know, uh, and then I, uh, I send it to, I send it, you know, electronically to this pre-print service. Uh, the, the fellow I worked with is, operates, he's, he's down in South Texas. Uh, I've never met him, but he, you know, he's done a great job and, and he was recommended to me. Uh, and what he does is basically format the thing so that it is in the shape that it needs to be for Amazon to take it and, you know, convert it into, i- i- into book form. And it's not just Amazon, but there's another, excuse me, another major wholesaler, I guess you'd say. It's called Ingram. Um, and Ingram services brick and mortar stores like Burns and Noble and, and your, you know, your neighborhood local bookstore that you might go to. Um, so, uh, again, that, that, uh, that function is, is, is basically sort of coding what you, what you wrote and, and, you know, fitting it into a page size and, um, and other things that, that are necessary for that wholesaler or for Amazon to, um, to produce. to, to produce an actual living, breathing, so to speak, book. So, anyway, that's about all I have. I, again, the book is available on amazon.com if you're interested or you can order it. Perhaps it's, it's even in a bookstore if you, down there, if you, if you're interested. And the other, the other thing I want to mention, the subject always comes up. You know, I'd love to get a signed copy or whatever. And obviously I'm more than willing to do that, but the problem is, you know, you get the book, you have to send it to me, I have to sign it. You know, I have to send it back and we're both incurring mailing costs and so forth. So, anyway, to get around this, my wife designed this pretty cool. These are labels, they're all the same. I don't know if you can see them well or not. They're about four by four inches. And the photograph is of, on the floor here is Ronnie Lee, the player that I talked about. And so what we're doing is for $5, if you're interested, if you're going to buy a book or give it, give it as a gift or whatever, you can, you can just email me and I'll give you my email address and you can probably also get it from Tim. Just email me and I could like sign it here or personalize it to, if you're giving it as a gift to somebody. And, and then, you know, I'll send, send this label off to you and you just slap it inside on a, on one of the front pages. And then when you get it, send, send me $5 back. And it's, it's really a pretty cool workaround to the, to the issue of, you know, signing books, which, which as I say, can be a hassle on both ends. So I'll give you my email addresses if anybody is interested. It's cassabudman, C.A.S.A.B.U.D.M.A.N. at gmail dot com. So, again, if you are interested, just shoot me an email and I can, I can get these out, you know, pretty quickly and, and hopefully, you know, if you're interested in a gift giving or whatever, the book is $18.99 and it's, it's been well received and, you know, I had a, really had a blast putting it together. So, anyway, I don't know if there's time for questions, but I, you know, I've got as much time as, as you might need. So if anybody has any, fire away.
I have a question. Trying to remember, you know, 71, I was in college and had young kids too, that probably would not have been considered abusive behavior art, but it sounds like, given today's standards, that he might have been somewhat abusive to those kids. Or is it just sound that way?
Well, you know, it's, it's a blurry line, frankly. I mean, just as, just as Bob Knight at Indiana was, was, I mean, ultimately that, I think that's what brought him down at Indiana, that he had, if you remember, there was a video that surfaced of him, you know, kind of roughing up a player. Neil Reed was the player, I remember that.
You have the Woody Hayes incident in Ohio on football.
Exactly, yeah.
I, I played basketball earlier than that in high school for a very demanding coach. We had blue blazers, gray slacks and school ties when we went on the road.
Yeah, everybody did.
And we did, you know, if we had a bad practice, we spent a long time running backwards from one end of the court to the other. But we never had anything of that nature. And I do, you know, it's, it's interesting. There are stories here in Gold Beach about how in the past, coaches treated their students, their players, but you know, it is, it is what it is back then. And, you know, the, I'm, I joined my wife with being surprised that there wasn't pushback, but maybe his escapades and his private life off the, out of the court, off the court, you know, these took away from anyone getting on his back about how he treated his players. But I don't, I don't think in 1961, our high school would have tolerated our coach going further than he went with us.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, I go back to the, what I said a minute ago about you've got some real blurred lines there. I mean, he had, you know, I, I attended a handful of his practices, you know, not, not many certainly. And not to say that I ever saw the most brutal of practice either. I mean, not all practices are equally demanding. But, you know, you get into that question of what can you do? I mean, I don't think he was ever accused of like, you know, physically striking a player, at least, you know, I know he was never accused of that. Now, you can also argue that making, making guys slam into each other, diving for a loose ball is, is no different from striking a player. I mean, you could argue that. But yeah, it, it was, it was a different era and, you know, you, you, there's no question you could get away with things then that you couldn't get away with now. But, but yet even now, you know, you'll, you'll have coaches that, that might cross a line. I mean, even a few years ago, Mike Montgomery, the, you know, who's a, you know, really well-respected coach, I don't know if you remember, but gosh, this was probably eight or 10 years ago, got in some hot water for, for, you know, grabbing a player in the huddle and, and maybe grabbing him by his shirt or whatever, jersey and, and yanking and toward him and, and, you know, I, I don't remember whether he, I don't remember whether he had to apologize, you know, issue a formal apology. It seemed like he, he did offer something like that. But it was, it was a different time and there's no question you could, coaches could get away with more. And part of it was, there were, there weren't as many eyes on things. I mean, everybody's got a cell phone now and every, so everybody has a camera. And it was just different.
So what did Harder do after leaving the U of O? Did he, was that the height of his career or?
You know, he, he went, he went to Penn State. He had come, I didn't really background that too well. He, he had come from the University of Pennsylvania. He was, he was a Philadelphia guy originally, came to Oregon. And then he really, he just sort of had tapped out at Oregon, I think. And so he, in 1978, he goes back to Penn State. And, you know, Penn State at the time was, I mean, then and now is a football school. And Joe Paterno was the head coach at Penn State. And he struggled back there, never really got it going. And then in, in 1983, he, he went to the NBA as an assistant coach. And he had a long, very long, I believe 26-year career in the NBA. In fact, he, he was a head coach briefly for the Charlotte Hornets when they were starting out as an expansion team. And, but he, he took on a persona, as he, as he stayed in the NBA for years and years, he took on a persona of, of very, very respected. And he lost a lot of the, a lot of the rough edges that he had, he had had at Oregon.
You remember which of the big five he was with in Philadelphia?
He was with Penn.
With the University of Pennsylvania?
Yeah, yeah. And he had, he had had two tremendously successful years in 69, 70 and 70, 71. In fact, the, his 70, 71 team went undefeated in the regular season and was, was undefeated all the way to the, the round of eight in the NCAA tournament and got beat by Villanova ironically, you know, right there. In a, in just a horrendous game where Villanova just crushed them and they hadn't lost a game all year. But he had a, yeah, he had two unbelievable seasons at Penn. Anybody else?
Well, thank you. That was very interesting.
I have a question more about working in the newspaper industry and what you've seen with the newspaper industry over the last few years. I mean, I, I'm a library director, so it's interesting to watch. We just, in the middle of COVID, we realized that the Register Guard had transitioned to USPA Today ownership. And we had a subscription and we were just looking at the content in it and 90% of it was syndicated content. About 10% of it was actually local news. And I mean, we just dumped the subscription. I'm, I'm just kind of curious about even just limiting it to the, to the sports field, what it's, what's happening with newspapers and how that's impacting reporting.
Well, it's, it's brutal, frankly, and the Register Guard is a great example of it. You know, it, obviously, you know, the, the industry itself is, I mean, there are a lot fewer papers now than there were, you know, pick a year, 15, 20, 30 years ago. But the Register Guard is a great example of frankly, how things have gone downhill. There were circulation, when I was there or toward the end of when I was there, was like 75,000 or close to 80,000 and it's down now under 30,000. And for good reason. It was a, it was a locally owned paper with, with a really well-respected publisher, family-owned paper. And the publisher really cared about the product. And at some point, the, the family sold the, sold the paper. I don't know, I was gone by then. I don't know when that happened. But, but it started a chain of events where, as you say, it's now a Gannett paper. And, and the formula for Gannett papers is strip it down to the bone. And I guess they must make a slight amount of money. Somebody, somebody, you know, at the paper in fact, or somebody who was recently at the paper, told me last week that if you're Gannett and you've got enough of these, you, you can, you know, it's worthwhile to you. If you, in fact, the way he put it is if you have 177 papers, then you're, you're making a little bit on, on all of them, then, then you're okay. But to give you an idea, there was, there was a time like when the Register Guard sports staff had, had 10 full-time people. Well, now they have, it's either two or three. And the, the deadlines are ridiculous. They're, I guess they're allowed, like, I mean, normally, you know, back in the day, copy deadlines, like if you've got a 7:30 or 8 o'clock basketball game, there's no way you can get a story in until, you know, between 10 and 11 o'clock. Nowadays, I guess, I guess the way the, the way it works is you, they're allowed like one story that can be turned in like, you know, after like 6:00 PM or something like that. So it's, it's terribly crippling to the, to the, to the product. And I can, I can see why, why readers would, would be turning away from it. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a mess. And there's, on a broader scale, there's, there's a lot of talk about whether, whether the government should, should bail out the newspaper industry. Because there is a, I'm sure there's a lot of people that would, that would laugh at that idea or find it really repugnant, but there's, there's, if journalism is done right, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a huge service to, to the community. And, you know, we're, we're all poorer with, without it if, if we don't have quality journalism.
Well, the Oregonian's not what it used to be.
No, not, no, not, not anywhere near.
And local television stations are going the same way. They're being bought up and the FCC allowed big companies to have, I think, twice as many licensed stations as they used to be limited to. And what we get here on our cable, I think, two or three out of the four locals are owned by the same organization that sends out scripted stories they have to read on their evening news for us.
Wow.
So it's, it's not good. But it's happening through all the media that is there to inform us, not just newspapers.
Yeah, no, it's, it's terrible. I, you know, one, one, I hesitate to call it an exception, but it's, it's close to that. The Seattle Times, which, which is my old paper, my last paper, I was there 16 years. They've, they've held out and done a really remarkable job. It's been family-owned for like five generations now. And even though, you know, the, the, the product as a whole is not as good as it was 15, 20, 30 years ago, it's still pretty vibrant. And, you know, they, they won a Pulitzer Prize, they won like 10 overall, but they won one here within the last couple of years. And, and I give the family a lot of credit because I know they're, they're not making much money, if, if any, but they're hanging in there and, and still putting out a product that's, that's at least respectable. It's not, it's, it's not, I mean, that space in the paper, the, you know, the, the number of pages is certainly diminished and whatnot. And that's a sign of the times, but.
I, I agree with, I mean, I don't know that I would advocate having the government take over newspapers or subsidize them even for sure. But I do know that in, in Gold Beach, the newspaper, like if you were an entity like the school, say, or the library, the newspaper was an important, traditionally an important arm of what we did as far as making sure that people understood what we were doing. And now, like, you know, I've basically got a full-time staff person doing that work and it's still an uphill climb to get the word out about what we're doing.
Yeah. Well, when you, when you think of, you know, a city of, of any size, not to have a vibrant watchdog on things that are going on, you know, like with city government or county government or, you know, the police department or whatever. I mean, not, not to have some sort of oversight is, is really a, is not a, not a great trend.
Well, you know, when the family that bought the pilot in Brookings, adding it to their list of community papers, they did a survey. And I believe more people wanted Dear Abby in cartoons than wanted local news. So, you know, we get what we ask for, or at least we get what the lowest common denominator of our county asks for. And it is sad, there is maybe, you have a reporter at your school board meetings occasionally, but I know Linda Pinkham is on Zoom with the school, the school committee at least. And I think if we get your school board things up fast enough, she reads, she listens to them and tries to do local news, but it is very, very difficult. There's just not a market for it. There's nothing left in the paper and the price went up and the number of pages went down. I stopped buying it. I have a hard time burning the trash because I don't have any newspaper to use to start the fires. They're not worth buying.
All right. Well, I'm going to bring this to closure here. Bud, thank you so much.
Yes, Bud, thank you.
It was a very great topic, good questions. And I'll make sure that our membership gets the links and. and makes another plug for your book, Mad Hoops, on Amazon. And, and think about it when it's holiday time. Oh, it's holiday time. All right, well, everyone else, have a great week. We'll see you next time. And Bud, I really do appreciate your time and good luck with everything you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you to Tim and thanks to the rest of you, I appreciate it.
You bet, take care.